I start the Board of Selectment meeting for August 17, 2023, and it is 6:00 PM. And I am calling the meeting to order. Can I please have everybody stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay, first thing on the agenda for tonight is discussion and possible vote to approve the sale of a bond anticipation note, a ban, renewal in the amount of $372,900, and to authorize the treasurer to issue the note to the Greenfield Cooperative Bank. Okay. Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You got background on this?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The treasurer unfortunately couldn't make it here this evening. She's been away this week on a planned family vacation. She wanted us to bring this to the board because this is time sensitive in the fact that if the board could sign on and approve the ban and also the note to Greenfield Cooperative Bank. What she has done, and what you may remember or recall from last year, at around this same time, we had the same ban. A different company, no, I think it was the same, it was the same company. Greenfield Cooperative Bank was a successful bidder last time, I believe. But every year, a bond anticipation note is only good for the year, and since she goes out to search to see what she can get for the best rates to issue another ban in anticipation of maybe issuing a bond. But in this case, there's going to be no bond that is going to be issued in the future. These are just short-term borrowings that the town does. One is for the backhoe, the other is for the town ambulance. And so these are short-term debts that we have out there that she has decided to consolidate the debts into one, have it reissued, and at a rate of 4.6%, which is still very low, given the standards now of, you know, rates could be anywhere from seven to eight percent. But this brings to the notion that the board should also be made aware of the fact that just last year at this time, those rates that we initially got for this one-year term piece of debt were three and a half percent for the backhoe and 3.75% for the ambulance. So you could see in just one year's span of time how much interest rate had went up just on this short-term borrowing. So I did, from my discussions with the treasurer, you know, we had also floated the idea of maybe at the annual town meeting, taking care of the debt in its entirety of the backhoe, because we currently owe somewhere around $80,000 on the backhoe. So it's plugged into the budget to pay $50,000 a year on the note. So we currently owe about 80,000. So, you know, I would anticipate us having a pretty strong free cash position, fortunately for this coming up year, in that we could, you know, potentially take care of the entire debt, so we wouldn't have to, you know, worry about interest rates in the future for the backhoe. Maybe not so much for the ambulance, but at least take care of the backhoe.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I don't.
I'm good with it. If you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the $372,900 bond anticipation note for the town dated August 25, 2023, and payable on August 23, 2024, to Greenfield Cooperative Bank at par with interest at the rate of 4.6% per annum payable at maturity.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. We need to sign that?
We have to sign all of these. Rich, you're the only one that has to sign this one.
Okay.
Now, these three are exactly the same. You could see that they're just copies.
Okay.
But you have to sign each one of them.
Hey.
Is it my turn?
Oh, yeah.
I have to sign them in?
Yes, you do, not this one.
Not that one either? Don't you break her color code?
Yes, sir.
Do I put this up here? We just put this, do we write the word Warren up here?
Yes.
August.
Got to wait on the next one anyways.
I know, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. Are happy faces.
Not really, honestly.
But they're happy.
Their smiles frozen to their face. Did I say that a lot? Am I done? I don't see any more.
You are done.
Okay. After this.
It's not cold, so you can see your breath.
I'm just kidding, and I sat myself right across from it. I'm already like, ready for my inhaler. I'll take that after, put the seal on it, and bring it back on my way out the door. Does that work for you?
That works for me.
Okay, I'm just going to put it in my folder. Because she said it needs to be out to Warren.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is review of a request from the town clerk to replace the town's two voting machines with more compliant and updated machines. Possible vote to use American Rescue Plan Act funds to purchase, fund this purchase. Okay.
So basically, we need new voting machines?
Before we start?
Yes.
You got to identify who you are and what your position is with the town.
I hope I'm the town clerk. I just signed my life away. I am Laurie Stoffley, the town clerk here. The town needs new voting machines. Absolutely, they have needed them for a while. Nonetheless, here we are. So it was something that I was planning to look into pretty much now, because this is my quiet time, you know, in the summertime, quieter than normal. And I got a call last week from a representative from the same vendor who, there's only two certified vendors that can give Massachusetts a voting machine, and they are one of them. And the state has given them funding to offer those few of us left, and she told me it was like under 20 of us that still have these older machines, because the state really wants us to get new machines. So she quoted me a price with like $2,000 off right now, because they got funding to allow us to do that. But she didn't really say it's first come, first served, but like if we don't act on it relatively soon, the funding is going to get smaller and smaller, because other towns probably are saying yes, or they could be saying no, I don't know if you're going to speak to other towns. But basically, it prompted me to do a little research, and I went to, you know, Jim immediately. The machines that I have were purchased in 1999, first used in 2000, which means there've been 23 years of elections in these machines. She verified that with me today. Nancy got a quote, I found out, because I found paperwork in one of the drawers four years ago. It was October of 2019, and I think what happened was, that was right shortly before COVID hit us, and we closed down, and that company, in fact, not closed down, but I think that's why it never kind of ended up happening, you know, four years ago in 2019, you know? I found a quote for the same machine, except this one's considered a generation, a step up. This one's one step more than the one they were quoted four years ago, and it's the same exact price that they're giving me before the discount, you know? So I think that's, that seems, it could have been a lot more, I would think, four years later with the way the world has gone. It comes under $10,000, so, you know, for two machines, so I don't even have to have a second bid, even though I put in to get one, the company has yet to get back to me. But I know this is a reliable people that help us whenever we have any kind of problem. They're the same people that do our memory cards and whatnot, and she gave me a list of all the towns that currently use it, one of them being the town of Ware. I spoke with her this week, and they are pretty happy with it, you know? But she told me things that kind of made me, you know, take a step back. These machines were, they're definitely considered obsolete, the ones they have. They have not been manufacturing these machines since 2007. They don't manufacture parts for them anymore since 2009, which means anytime one of these, anything breaks on the machine, what they're using are scrap-together refurbished parts just to keep it going. If something were to happen, she named three different things on the machine that they don't even have parts for anymore, like the clock. If that thing goes, we have no clock. I'm pretty sure I have to have a clock on the election, you know, it's a timed thing, you know, and whatnot. And she said the memory card readers, there are probably today no parts for that either. And if I can't get a memory card in, then I can't even use machines, which means we're literally going to a paper vote, counting at the end of the night type of thing. Yeah. And the machines, she said, these machines would not pass federal certification today. They can't take them away from me, because I'm grandfathered in, if you want to use that expression, but if these same machines went to federal certification right now, they wouldn't pass.
The ones we currently have?
Yeah.
Not the ones we get?
No, the ones that we have.
The ones we're getting are good, and you can get parts for them.
The ones that we're getting are both federally certified and Massachusetts certified, and they are on the list of approved machines that we can use for the state of Massachusetts. She gave me all that paperwork. So basically, I need machines, but I didn't put in for it in my budget in February, because I didn't really know the urgency of it, you know? I didn't know that that was something I needed to do. And I don't even think I have enough money in my election budget. If I did, it would wipe me out, and then I wouldn't, you know, I mean, I have a big election coming up, so probably going to be a bigger payroll and things like that. My next election is March, which is a presidential primary, and then we have our may elections. So there's two elections on this budget, and obviously any town meetings that pop up, you know?
Do they give us, say, if we give them our old machines, do we get money off?
Well, she said that, kind of asked her that specifically, because in the quote I found for Nancy, there was $1,000 off. And I said, she, well, she almost laughed at me, because these machines are so bad. But she said, we will take them and we'll scrap them for refurbished parts for those town clerks that won't do it. But she said that's incorporated into the $2,000 discount she's giving me on these machines. I have the, I have a copy of the quote that she's given me. Do they have that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, so the discounted credit is $2,200,000, including me off of the machines. That total would be $11,400, which is the exact quote that Nancy got four years ago.
That's with the turn in of ours.
And she said that's, well, they would take them. I didn't know that till today, so it's not going to come any lower with turning in ours, because ours aren't doing as anything, but they won't take them off my hands.
But we don't have to pay it the wrong way.
And she said this includes the ballot boxes themselves that I have to, you know, my black boxes won't be good anymore, because these machines are different size. So she said that includes carry cases through your RFP ballot box, and they will come out, and then includes all training, they'll come out and do demos. She's going to come out and do a demo just for me, probably a lesson, but she'll do training and all that, including whatever I want to do, so. Which I thought was good, because I wanted to get all of my workers together and tell them you've done it. So that's, that with that, other than a wire, you know, and this thing I wrote up just now, when I just found out that, you know, about all of this. The other thing is, which I didn't know until I spoke with her, for us to get new voting machines, I have to present it to the board, I don't mean at this particular moment, but and we would have to vote on the getting, using new machines and, you know, turning out the old machines. And then I have to take that vote, and I have to notify the state that I have new, I'm going to use new equipment, and it's specifically 120 days before an election. So if I want to get new machines for the next election in March, this all has, I have to notify them by November 6th, so.
So we couldn't wait for the special in the spring?
So not if I want to use them in the next election. And hearing everything I heard, now that makes me nervous to even use these machines for one more election, I mean, it is what it is. They have my machines, and it didn't work the last time I used them. If I had to push it off, let's say, to the next one in May, that means I have to use my equipment now for the March primary, which is the presidential primary, which is why I have to watch in March.
Which is technically no longer compliant, technically.
Which is technically, I mean, it's, it's not going to mean the election wouldn't be valid, but that machine would not pass federal certification today, which is like security. She told me that these are programmed with Windows XP, which hasn't been used in over decades, so you can't even really get the programming upgraded, because it's, you know, I just learned all of this in the last half hour, these details, because I started asking her a bunch of questions, because Jim said, you know, let's go on the agenda, yada, yada, yada.
So these are time-sensitive, though?
I believe, in my opinion, yes, it's time-sensitive.
How much do we have left?
After hearing everything she said, I'm going to be a nervous wreck the next election, if I have these machines on, you know, knowing that I could be bigger than them.
Approximately $24,600.
So this would leave us with, say, $14,600? $14,000?
You can always put it on the special and reverse ARPA, right? Put the money back in?
Right, can't do something like that? Yes, Mrs. King?
So there are 57 towns in this state, I count by hand.
One second.
Yep.
Can you identify who you are, man, before you?
Drew King, Brad Road. There are 57 towns in the state of Massachusetts, count by hand. I have counted by hand previously in Los Brookfield, where I live there. We were always done at 11 o'clock at night. This is not a large town, and I think you could even find people that would volunteer, and we wouldn't have to pay them to count ballots. And they're fully saving all that money, and then we will know also that there's no possible problem with the machines. Because you've got paper, 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 which we already have paper. This is just accounting. And I know that's probably not a happy thought.
Do you have a response to that?
The last presidential election year, I had over 1,000 mail-in ballots.
Hopefully, the whole Capitol Bush.
Well, and then 1,000 showed up in person, so over about 2,000 people do vote during the presidential year. That doesn't happen in most elections, sometimes they have 300 people, but these have been some heated presidential elections we've had, you know, you're one of my election workers, but I'm not even sure what's, you know, if that's necessarily something, you know? I'm saying if the machine broke down while we were using it, we have no choice to put them in the hand pocket and count those that didn't go through at the end of the night. I wasn't, you know, suggesting necessarily we go backwards, and, you know, I mean, I don't even, I'd have to talk to the state. I don't even know if that's something that all of a sudden I decided, you know, you must be talking about towns who probably never had a voting machine, not going from a voting machine to a hand, you know? There used to be stuff in the closet from back when they did that, and I know that's not even in there anymore, you know?
There are, there are lots of towns counting and going back to count by hand, because they know there's no problem with ballots.
I mean, I'm here till, the last presidential election, I was here till 1 o'clock in the morning, and that's with paper. That's just dealing with all the write-ins that come out. That's the other side of it. It's not, to think you could hand count ballots by 11 o'clock at night is, I don't think, you're, you know, that's insane, in my opinion. I mean, that's because I know I'm here till 1 o'clock in the morning, just dealing with the write-ins up in our office, you know?
And trying to verify everything.
Well, yeah, and then, and then putting the results together, I'm, you know, and that part's easy, once we get it all on the computer and we email it to the Associated Press and all that, and I give it to them at home, but it's all the different, a primary is everything times two or three, because there's, there's three parties this year. So every little, every vote is times three, because there's three different parties out there. So it's, primaries are far more time-consuming than actually the actual election, well, anyone might do.
I'm just saying, it's true.
All right, thank you very much.
No problem.
Yeah, you know, my thoughts are, is we've been using the machines. They are outdated, been using them since 1999.
2000, but still, yeah, they were purchased and used in this, coincidentally, I'm guessing same thing, they wanted to start the year off without doing one set of machines in one month, and then switching year, I don't know, they, it could just be coincidence, they used them for the first time in a March election, 20, nearly 24 years ago.
And if it wasn't because we have an election, and everybody knows this election's going to be watched very closely, that, you know, to have a compliant machine, we don't want to get accused of anything, the town did anything, or on the wrong side of anybody, because we didn't update our equipment like we should have, and it also ensures that the proper security and complacency for the federal government and the state is there. I would, in something like this, I would have said, well, can't wait to the special. The problem with that is it's limited.
Right, it is a deadline that I need, and I, like I said, it just, I mean, she called me last week, but, you know, I'm, this is, this is my first year as town clerk. I've certainly never purchased voting machines, and I didn't even know all this, you know, it had to be a state approved, I mean, I know vaguely talking about it, but it's not something Nancy did either, so I didn't even get to do it with, you know, as her assistant. I'm finding this out by literally digging through files and finding paperwork going back, you know, to 1999, when I didn't work here. Nancy did wasn't even town clerk then, she came in in 2003. All of this stuff was signed by town clerk before her, you know?
And if we do use ARPA funds, it's not affecting our tax, it's, it's not our taxes being paid, used to pay for it. It's federal funds that were granted, utilized for things like accessibility and things like this. Yeah, because it is time-sensitive, and I, honestly, when I first heard about this, I'm like, can't wait to the special? Like, because, you know?
Right, and I was, you know, and I'm like, oh, I don't know how to do an article, but now that I know this, you know?
I'm, I'm good with it. We still have $24,000, and that will bring us down to $14,000, which is nothing really pressing out there, it's just clean up with these things, you know?
Well, I think, again, we're using this for capital projects, you know, improvements, so.
This is an improvement, it's an upgrade to our system.
We used, what, the CARES Act money for the clickers, so we've upgraded that, I mean, yeah, I would say, I think election integrity is a big thing, so.
It's an absolute positive, yeah.
And if, if there's, you know, people are missing, well, these things are out of date, and yada, yada, so we'll probably need to get new ones.
I just don't want our, our little town, all the Fox News or CNN saying that we weren't compliant.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm not saying if I use them, it's not legal, she's saying they wouldn't, you can't, I'm grandfathered in. She literally said, if you took these, these things today would not be considered. That does not make me feel comfortable, just that, you know, like you said, the security and whatnot, and, you know, the technology out there today, that, you know, people try to do with viruses and worms, bugs, and hackers, et cetera, that's crazy, you know?
Well, it'd be a lot easier to hack these machines.
Yes, that's what she, word for word, she said, these are far more secure, these would be more secure, which, you know, again, and the conversation is so fresh in my head, I just got off the phone with her like, not even an hour ago. I waited all day for her to call. I didn't, I mean, I knew, I knew that, I learned about the, you know, 120 days and all that since last, since I first talked to her, but I didn't even know about how they stopped manufacturing them, you know, in 2007, and there are no parts, no parts. I mean, I worry about getting the clock changed, because we always have a time change, so my election is not off an hour, you know, on paper. The clock goes all together, that's breaking to me. Never mind the memory card, the memory card is key, you know?
Especially after all, right? Then I'm losing that.
The machine can't read it, you know, can't read. When you're talking, I got two machines, I got, you know, two polling places, so it's not like I can take it out of one and give it to the other, they both have to work.
So what's your thoughts, Mrs. Clark?
I would concur with the town clerk.
Mrs. King?
I agree for convenience, definitely positively, essentially, but I would like to go and look at it, I think it still should be a handicap. Four absolute positive things, because these machines can arrive already tampered with, and there is no one that would know that, no one. Because the guy that programmed them said that he did a program that it's undetectable by anyone. He shouldn't have done it, he agrees, he shouldn't have ever done it, but it's happened. But anyway, just my two cents.
Well, we have checks and balances to ensure that the integrity of the election is still.
I have to do ballot testing for every election. It's the memory card that's being tested, I mean, the machine, yes, but it's the memory card, it's being tested to prove that it's working right. And then we print a report before every election, that shows there's, it's called a zero report, to show that there were no totals on anything before the polls open. At 8 o'clock, you do a, you know, you run a zero report, you hang it up for them to see that these are flat-out election laws you have to abide by. So you can show that we weren't, you know, nobody was coming in and throwing ballots in before 8 o'clock, because the tape, the tape gets printed at 8 o'clock, it's part of turning on the machine, it gets hung up, that's not what that, you know, that's how that works, that's what a zero report is called, you know?
I understand your concern, believe me.
We could go into a terrible discussion, but I know it's controversial, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Whatever.
And we all, I think we all want to make sure our elections are accurate, and every single vote is counted exactly how it was voted on.
We can do legally, the memory cards get locked in the safe, the memory cards end up in the machines, the machines don't even go downstairs by me. Police officer takes me out, I don't, they take him to West Warren, but I won't even, we need more ballots, you know?
Police officers carrying it for you and everything, so.
I can't even leave the hallway on election morning until they've come and got it, because I've got it out there waiting for them, and I won't let it leave my sight, you know? Which they're going to find it in the ladies room one of these days, because I can only wait so long, you know? When I bring it in with me, I'll bring it back out, because that's it, I can't take eyes off of it. Well, there's two of us.
In extreme cases. But that has not happened, so if everybody knows, that's why it has not happened.
No, I'm just kidding.
All right. I'm good with that, I want to make sure the, you have the most accurate equipment possible.
I do too, and I'd like to get in a timely enough manner so I can get them all used to use again, you know? If we, if we had to use the old ones in March and the new one in May, that doesn't give me much time to, to train in between, that's only two months apart, those two elections, you know?
I'm good with it.
Yeah, that's fine.
And it's ARPA money, so, and this is exactly what we've been using ARPA money for, is upgrading our systems, getting better technology, getting better equipment for everybody, and trying to do the right thing, so.
All right, so I'll make a motion to use American Rescue Plan Act funds, $9,220, to replace the town's two voting machines with more compliant and updated machines.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I will contact her next week, and I'll see, you know, next steps and all that. John wanted this locked up, so.
You're going to stamp it and put it in your safe?
I'm going to put it in the safe. You don't have to make copies of it or anything like that.
I'll get copies of it on Monday when we give it.
I'll take it, stamp it, lock it in my safe.
Please.
And I'm going home. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Good night.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is discussion and possible vote on the acceptance of $1,197,000 for fiscal years 2022 and '23, community block grant, CDBG program. And, Mr. Farrar?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For you this evening is a letter that we had received late July. Um, for you this evening is a letter that we had received, uh, late July, uh, on the announcement, uh, from the Healy Driscoll, um, administration, uh, that the town is a recipient of one million, uh, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, uh, for CDBG funds, uh, for fit, for the fiscal years twenty-two and twenty-three. As you may remember, that this fiscal year cycle when we applied for, uh, CDBG with our partner CMRPC, the Central Mass Regional Planning, uh, Authority, um, it was gonna be a combination of both years. So it would be for twenty-two and twenty-three together. Um, so that's why you'll see that there's a, uh, an uptick in money. Uh, it's for, for, for both fiscal years. Um, last year, um, for fiscal year twenty-one, they always want, run a year behind as well. Um, last year for fiscal year twenty-one, the town was a, a recipient of, of CDBG funds in the amount of eight hundred thousand dollars. So combining it, you got a little bit more. Um, hopefully, um, you know, CDAC and, and, and our planning partners, uh, over at CMRPC, um, in the community can come up with some good projects to, to continue on. I know that there was a discussion of possibly, you know, continuing on to where we're working on from right now, from school and Prospect Street, continuing on into that neighborhood, um, for the use of these funds, uh, for the future.
Very good. Do you have any questions, sir?
No, just a big thanks to CMRPC and Chris Poffey.
Yeah.
Yeah. Awesome job.
All right. Motion to accept the one million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, uh, grant for fiscal year twenty-two and twenty-three, community block grant.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. And thank you very much for everybody's hard work on that. Okay. Next thing on the agenda is discussion and review of candidates to fill the position of part-time assessor clerk. Okay. So with this, we had a recommendation from the Board of Assessors for one person, Patricia Place?
Place, yep.
Okay.
Well, no, there's, there's, there's two recommendations, uh, two finalists, yep.
And then, uh.
And then one recommendation, Patricia Place.
Tina L. White.
Yep.
But the Board of Assessors is actually recommending, um, Ms. Place, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you, do you have a background on that?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, through the last couple of weeks, uh, the Board of Assessors, uh, the assistant assessor, Betty Jo O'Brien, myself, um, had interviewed, um, you know, we had a, a pool of approximately thirty-four candidates for the position of assessor clerk. Uh, there was, that pool was narrowed down to eleven. Uh, from, from that, um, from that eleven, uh, I believe six were, uh, were, actually came in for interviews, um, and out of those six, um, three had, had, had risen to be finalists. Uh, two showed up for the interview, uh, for the finalist position, the two that are in front of you this evening, with one ultimately recommendation, uh, from the, um, from the Assessor's Office and myself, Patricia Plas. Patricia, uh, is currently working, uh, with, in the town of Brimfield, and has been there since two thousand and one. Uh, she is a Conservation Commission clerk. Uh, she's there on a part-time basis. Uh, she works about twel-, uh, ten to twelve hours a week. Um, those hours are very flexible. She's looking to do a little bit more. Um, she has, um, some municipal, uh, experience, um, as well as, um, a, a master's in e-global learning and an MBA from Nichols College. Um, so, um, she, uh, is looking to, um, to fill up some, some additional time that she has. Uh, the, uh, the committee thought she'd be a good fit for the office and that she's knowledgeable and resourceful, uh, to learn the position, uh, and, um, we'll bring this before the Board this evening for your consideration.
Okay. Do you have any questions, sir?
No, I thought they were both strong, when, yeah, I think, uh, Ms. Plas is probably a stronger candidate, so, you know, she could, got the municipal experience.
Yep.
She's got the steady work.
Yeah.
She's been at places for long, long periods of time.
Yeah, very long stretches, so.
She has, she has MBA in, you know, business administration from Nichols. She has a lot of business background, office manager.
Okay. I'm good, I'm good with the recommendation from the Assessor's Office.
All right. So I'll make a motion to accept Pat- Patricia Plas, Plas, to fill the part-time assessor clerk, clerk position.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously. Okay, next thing on the agenda is review the recommendation of the Board of Assessors.
Oh, um, what I was just, I was just curious, um, is if you were gonna take up where you wanna be on the step?
That's what we were.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, that's the next.
Yeah. Uh, review recommendation of Board of Assessors and possible vote, no? Uh, yep, and possible vote to fill the position of assessor clerk with starting step. So this is a new position?
No.
No? Part-time assessor clerk, right?
Part-time, yep.
Okay. So we read that. Review the recommendation of the Board of Assessors and possible vote to fill the position of part-time assessor clerk with a starting step. And what are they looking at for starting step?
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, this is, it was, the, the position was advertised with a range, uh, obviously the range being sixteen seventy-three to twenty-two forty-eight. Um, this range is solely based on, um, the discretion of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, so, um, you know, you know, based on her skills, um, her, um, her educational background, uh, and experience, uh, would set where, where the Board would, um, you know, like to be at, at, in terms of, of what we can, um, you know, afford to pay. Um, you know, the Board may want to, um, you know, look within, you know, it's going a little bit, uh, higher than the minimum on this one because of the MBA.
It's under number five. The wage scale is under number five.
So what were they looking for? What is she looking for? Did she ask for a certain amount, a match for her current job, or?
Uh, you know, she was, she was happy in the, in the, in the lower range, uh, position, um, uh, you know, to start.
Well, how low?
Well, I mean, I, I think she, I think she would settle for the, the minimal, um, you know, um, you know, but basing it upon what we have done in the past with bachelor's degrees, um, you know, this person has an MBA, um, you know, you know, and trying to retain, uh, people, I, I think a step one would be, you know, legitimately warranted.
She's got a master's and an MBA.
And she falls under what grade?
C two?
C two?
C two, yep.
For FY twenty-four?
Yeah. So seventeen twenty-three?
Right.
Did the assessors make any recommendation?
Uh, they had mentioned somewhere around the ballpark of seventeen dollars to seventeen fifty.
What are you thinking? Well, I mean, step one would be in the middle of that range.
Yeah.
I mean, the, I guess, in terms of, I don't know, in deep, in terms of being competitive, like, is this a good amount? I guess I, there's not a lot of information, so.
Well, it's really up to the Board to advocate for them. You know, it's not for us to sit there and say, you know, we think you should earn money, more money, you know, being fiscally responsible, you know, but i- it's, it's really up, that's what the purpose of this was, is if the Board feels like this person, this candidate warrants more money, they should come to us and say, hey, you know, we have this position, and this is what we'd like to start this person at. Why? You know? Are you advocating for that?
Uh, well, I, I mean, I could.
Were you asked to, to?
I, I can certainly, yeah. I mean, it, you know, I, I can certainly say that, you know, there was mentioned, you know, seventeen dollars to seventeen fifty, uh, was the range. So I, I think that, you know, in, yeah, in falling in line with what we have done in the past, but where, you know, um, you know, people would normally come in at a minimum, but, you know, in order to retain and keep qualified people and select people who have bachelor's or have master's degrees, you know, I think it, it's warranted definitely for a step one.
Yeah, i- i- in, yeah, it's definitely warranted for a step one. My, my thought is, this person got a master's degree and, you know, it just, and, and she's got several years of experience, of municipal experience too. Um, if that's all she wants, I'm good with that, but typically for her masters, I, I would've thought somebody would want it a little more mighty than that. But if that's not what she's wanting.
Yeah, I think she's, she's, she's more along the lines of looking to, um, to have some additional hours to keep busy, um, and I, I, you know, I think that's where she is in her life.
Okay. All right. Yeah. I'm good with that. Step one?
Yeah.
All right. Um, okay, take a motion.
So there's been no, obviously no offer back to her for her to accept at this point, so.
So, you know, if the Board would, uh, you know, if the Board approves this all tonight, um, then I could call her and tell her that the Board has appointed her as, as, um, an assessor clerk, uh, and you can start the onboarding process.
And she's, she would, you think she's, would be okay with the step one in terms of the negotiation point?
Yeah, that we had had initially. I think, you know, that's right around the, the, you know, what we could afford too, because I looked at the budget as well and to see what we have budgeted for that line, uh, we could, we could afford that at this point.
Okay.
To offer that.
All right. So I'll make a motion to set, um, set the starting step for the assessor clerk at a step one, um, which is seventeen dollars and twenty-three cents an hour, under the C two schedule. Yeah, the C two, uh, pay scale.
Okay. I'll second that. All in favor?
Richi Hocker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Just a minute. Have the Board advocate if that's what they wanna do, you know?
Yeah, like.
Give us a reason why, you know, for that. Yeah, my opinion in. It's a master's degree. You think we're getting a deal?
We're, we're fortunate.
Yes. Well, all right. I'm good with that. All right. Um, okay, number six, review letters of interest to fill the vacancy of the Board of Health until the next town election and possible vote to fill, um, fill said vacancy. Okay? And for that, we've had one person interested?
Right. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It says letters of interest.
Right, yeah. Uh, I was hoping we had, uh, we had until today at four o'clock to get any, uh, letters and, and the only, um, we only received one at the moment. Um, you know, it was posted for, since our last meeting that we had two weeks ago. Um, it's on the website, it's posted on the Board. Um, you know, you know, if, if the Board wants to continue to look for more people, um, we could, you know, put it out there for another two, couple of weeks, or, um, you can, you know, certainly review the requests that's before you tonight.
So the individual that gave us the letters, James McKeon. Uh, you know, James McKeon's a knowledgeable person, has a lot of experience with the town, um, hard worker, very hard worker. With that, you know, we appreciate everything he has done for our community and continues to do. Um, my, my question is, he has a position with public works, our highway guys. He's also our emergency manager. He's also on the decorating committee. Did I miss anything? Is he on there?
He's in the audience.
No, he's right here.
There you are! I'm used to seeing you online. Oh, I'm sorry, I was talking you up. But, um, you have a, a lot in our community. Is this something? Because it's an appointed position, can we do this?
Well, um.
Because he's gonna have to be elected.
Right, correct.
But because it's appointed, I, are we?
So I have a call in to Town Council, to Jeff Blake, uh, to make sure that, um.
Cause I wanna make sure we're good.
Yeah, that, that, that there's no, uh, issues here. Um, I, I haven't heard back from him yet. Um, you know, the only thing that will, you know, would, would be in question would be whether or not this individual could potentially collect the, uh, stipend. So, uh, you know, I think the person could serve, uh, but whether or not the person could collect the stipend, uh, would be another thing, because it's appointed. Uh, now, if the person, uh, was elected to it, that's a different story. But since the person's appointed, uh, there may be a, uh, an issue of whether or not the person could collect the stipend because of the other positions that the person holds.
Right. Um, you know, I, I think we're gonna have to table this one to next meeting.
Sure.
Um, because I think we need to call Ethics too.
Sure.
And get Ethics's opinion on it.
Mm-hmm.
If he's elected, if you're elected to a position, you're elected, no problem. It's because it's an appointment that would kinda, and you have other jobs with the town, it starts falling to that, I think, because you can't have an appointed positions, multiple appointed positions. You can have multiple elected positions, just not multiple appointed. So let's find out through Ethics if we can do that. If Ethics is good with it, I think he's great, he's a great candidate. And obviously, he does not wanna have any personal time in his life because he's always working.
Yeah, I know.
You know? So I, I really appreciate all you do for the town too. You are by far one of the hardest workers we have in our community.
Yeah.
You know? Just makes a personal time too. But yeah, let's table this to next meeting and get, uh, Jeff.
Yep.
And Ethics's opinion on that, so. We just don't wanna get you stumbled up in something else because it violates Ethics or anything like that, so. Did you have anything you just wanted to say?
Uh, no, I just kinda saw the opportunity, I thought it, it could tie into lots of what nursing and it is.
Yes.
It almost stems off of Board Health a little bit, so it's just another opportunity I kinda wanted to look into.
Pretty much we're gonna have to have, just gym run the whole time.
Yeah, I know.
I, I did think there would be a couple of people interested, but.
It is what it is. But yeah, let's, I'm good with it, and I think he'd be a great candidate, just.
Okay.
It's verified through Ethics, we can do it.
Yep.
Okay. Um, you good with that, sir?
Yeah. I think it's good.
So this. So Mr. Dusty, table it.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Alright, so, next thing on the agenda is acknowledgement of resignations of Jessica Clark, administrative assistant to the Board of Health, and Jill Miller, secretary for, to the building and planning departments, and Andrew Nepal, our new ti- new full-time police officer, he is also resigning from those positions. Good, any questions on that?
Did we just appoint Officer Nepal?
We did.
Like a few months, even a few months ago, two months ago?
Yep.
Wow, okay. Stuff happens, huh? Okay.
And for personal reasons, they.
Yeah. Okay.
I could let the board also know that the, the vacancy for that police officer is posted. So it's posted on town's website, it's going into the Ware River News and Surrounding Newspapers starting next week and the week after. The closing date for the position is September eighth, and it is also on Indeed as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much, sir. Are you good?
Yeah.
So moving on to the fire department monthly report. So the best chief in the state.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, Adam Lloyd Fire Chief, having an in this evening. Just a quick review of the activities of the fire department for July of two thousand twenty-three. Responded to twenty-four fire-related calls. Ranged four more vehicle accidents, six medical assists, one structured fire, four activated alarms, two power line incidents, one cooking fire, one service call, two investigations, one vehicle fire and one illegal, uh, two illegal burns, excuse me. More EMS responded to fifty-seven calls in July of two thousand twenty-three and sixteen ALS intercepts required. They, we did four small CO inspections, one liquid propane tank inspections, two oil burner equipment inspections. More on fire personnel itself on the fireside, we hosted a training with several of the departments. We had about four or five other towns in, working on a newer concept called the rural hitch. The rural hitch is a term that is used for, specifically for fires that are outside of the hydrant district. Basically, you're using a fire truck as, or tanker as a fire hydrant and you're feeding it with other tankers coming in. So it's a, a newer idea that's been out there for a few years. We've never really used it, but we've had some interest in, in doing some joint trainings with other towns to improve the water supply in some of these rural areas, which is always a goal that we, you know, we certainly don't wanna run out of water, but it happens in some of these remote areas. It's very hard to, to have a water source nearby, so, you know, we, what we do is we have set alarm cards that have certain engines and tankers that are brought in automatically. If you strike a second or a third or a fourth alarm, we have more and more communities come in to try to alleviate that problem as, as best we can. So, again, this is a newer method, this is something all the local towns are, are starting to train on and train together on, so it's more of a flawless and seamless activity once everybody gets onsite together. But the goal is to, is to keep up with that water supply at a larger fire. We actually have a couple other trainings coming up with other communities that are, again, hosting these actually this month and next month, so it's kind of been something that we've all been working on together. More EMS members, we completed our required ASHR training. For anybody who doesn't know what ASHR training is, stands for active shooter hospital event responses. This is a new requirement by OEMS that all EMS providers need a basic awareness class for this. Unfortunately, the world we live in has changed a lot and these types of incidents happen throughout the world and we're trying to be as prepared as possible so that our members have the very basic understanding of what they may be asked to do, God forbid there was an event of, of an active shooter or something like that. They have things called rescue task forces where, you know, the, the police and EMTs or EMS and fire work hand in hand, they're escorted into a building, into a warm zone where to extract, you know, potential patients and things like that. So it's never a bad idea to have everybody on the same page, because these types of situations, you know, while they don't happen very often, they certainly happen and they tend to be extremely chaotic and, and, and things go south really quickly. So the more training and more joint training we have together with law enforcement and other agencies, the better we are. So they decided it was best to have a, a basic understanding of this type of thing. So most of this is online or instructor led, but all of our, all of our providers that are active on the angles now have that required training. So it's been a pretty, pretty busy, pretty busy month in terms of training. A lot of other things we're still working that I don't have on the report. Working very hard to get the program off the Quay log going again, we revamped things once again. We've added more PowerPoints, we've added more, uh, different types of, of presentations there. You know, we're incorporating Fire Academy now, so we're always looking at tweaking that program up there. So, you know, the staff has been, been, you know, going through all of those different files, the syllabus and all of the other things that we're doing for that class, as well as our junior program. We've had a couple more people come on from the junior program lately, which is fantastic. We're having more interest, I had a, someone actually walk in off the street and, and put an application out, you know, randomly the other day, which I gotta bring up his paperwork to Jim probably tomorrow, but that hasn't happened in years. I mean, most people are not knocking on our door anymore, so, you know, that's why we started the program at the school. But every once in a while, we have someone that has a piece of interest and they come in from the community, which is still nice to see. So we're constantly busy behind scenes doing a lot of other things that I usually list on the report, but, you know, we're, we're, we're always staying active. FY twenty-four budget's underway, I'm watching all the line items as I always do very closely. We still have some encumbered funds from FY twenty-three that we're waiting for bills to come in, something to trickle in, but everything's been encumbered appropriately and, and as far as I go, you know, all of that stuff is, is in line. We do have a new truck coming in probably the beginning of September. It's been a three-year in the making process off of a grant, it's half funded by the town, half funded by the, uh, by the, by FEMA, so that's pretty exciting, that's finally replacing our, our old engine five, which is being repurposed to be brought up to the school for, for that project, for that program up at the school. It still pumps, so we can use it for certain applications up there. So that truck should be coming in in September, so that's, we're excited to see that. That is a mini attack slash brush unit, it's about a three hundred thousand dollar piece of equipment at the end of the day. So we're pretty excited to, to, to get that in. A lot of things going on, a lot of projects, you know, still working on, on some other things, but always busy.
Very good, and so everybody's aware, OEMS is the Office of Emergency Medical Services.
Yes, my, my apologies. So they, they govern everything that we do on the emergency medical side of things. They govern all of our protocols, what we're required to do, what we can do, what we can't do. They're involved with our drug licenses, with our medical control doctors, so, you know, everything funnels through them. You know, if there's any issues on license, we have to renew every two years, all of that goes through OEMS.
So one thing I did see on here is you guys competed in a competition recently.
Yeah, so that was, that happened.
How'd that turn out?
Yeah, it went, it went really good, so we had, you know, many, many years ago, they're still common in some areas, they have activities called musters, fireman must, firefighter musters, and this was something you used to see a lot of, a lot more, you know, even fifteen, twenty, thirty or, or plus more years ago. You know, where I first started on the call department, I was on before I came to Warren, you know, they were very active in that area on those type of things. And they do different races such as bed races, sometimes bucket brigades. It's, it brings back the tradition of where firefighting started. And the town of Brookfield hosted a muster event the other day to celebrate their three hundred and fiftieth anniversary. There were several towns that came around from the area. This is something, we've never done a muster since I've been here and it's something we used to do back and we had some at the Polish Club in West Warren, at St. Stan's, and it was, these were huge events, these are huge events for towns. Everybody came out to these things in the past and everything, but they've kinda died off, you know, over, over the last few decades. So it's nice to see one come back and we put a team together and they did amazing. They won three out of the four events first place and they ended up taking home the overall number one winner there. So it's nice and a lot of them were the, the younger ones that have just recently come into the department, which is really nice to see, cause they kind of, they've never seen anything like this, they've never been part of it. They, you know, so it kind of brings back the tradition and the camaraderie between the departments. So I, I think that's, I think this was a shot in the arm for everything that everybody's been through the last few years. It was, I think it was kind of nice for everybody to come together and do that. So we're very proud of them, they brought home four trophies that day and now they're all talking about hosting one here. So we'll see what happens, hopefully, you know, they had a few towns that canceled at the last second. It is what it is, tough to get people to, to participate in some of those things nowadays, but it, it went well. You know, the towns that were there, they really enjoyed it and I think, hopefully, that's a shot in the arm to start having some of that stuff come back into the, into the service.
That'd be, it's amazing and.
Yeah.
I definitely support it. It would be anything you need now.
It's neat to watch, you know, it takes a lot to put it together, it's, you know, it is, it is a lot to, to coordinate everything, but, you know, it's, my hat's off to Brookfield for hosting, you know, it went well, the people that are there, they had blast, so.
Very good, I just have to say, another reason why they're top dog in this, this state. Got the best chief, so, you know, in the state, so. And the best team.
Thank you, guys.
You have an amazing group of firefighters, you have a very pride of all their hard work and everything they do.
No, it's, it's a good group, you know, the way our call volume is nowadays, you know, it's just, it's through the roof all the time. So we're asking to do more and more all the time and somehow, some way, we scrape by, you know, every week with the schedule and we, you know, it becomes tough, you know, we, we definitely can need more help, but, you know, the ones that are there, they're, you know, they're pulling as much weight as they can, you know. It's, uh, it's tough to still run on, on, on people's volunteerism these days and that's stuck, you know, take its toll, but, you know, it's a great group of people, they, they always give a hundred and ten cents, no doubt about that.
And just with your leadership, it's good to see that people wanna work with you and for you and you're having people come off the street now.
No, it's, we're hoping for a couple more come through the program, we've had five of them come out of the program thus far through Quay log, West Brookfield I think is right around five or six, so that's helping them out tremendously too. So, you know, they're very appreciative of, of that, you know, we have all new leadership at Quay log now. We have new principal and new vice principals, so we're just meeting them for the first time, going over this, but they seem very excited to continue the program and, you know, they, they seem super supportive. So we're gonna hope that that continues and we start to, to continue to see some recruits come through there and once they come through the junior program or the high school program, they'll go into the academy and hopefully we can push them towards, you know, the EMS side of things to help, you know, take some of that, you know, those hours of burden off for people that are doing all, you know, so. We're hoping for the best, thank you very much.
Awesome job, chief, leading the team. Alright, emergency management monthly report.
Okay, Jim McKeon, emergency manager director, here too.
Present my July report.
July, well for us was kind of wet, a wet and busy month, I think I should say. Well, it started July second, or a siren test that went off. Then later that day, was when the School Street Hoover Dam breached, flooding Village Plaza, Railroad sixty-seven, about two hours or so, fire department, police, fire department, DOT, we're all on scene, they're there. Though earlier in the afternoon, two o'clock or three o'clock, was a two to three hour timeframe that dumped two inches of rain in this, this area, which could have been a cold weather, one of the colds, two, making everything rise and stuff. So that was our first major rainfall. The next day, July third, a large tree branch came down right behind the fire station in Warren, Quay log street, knocking power out, probably about sixty or seventy people. That's one of the main feeds that go that whole section, School Street, Richardson, Prospect, Mooreham, that. That's a fairly large area of town, if something happens, um, they fix that. It was about four hours that people were out of power. And then July seventh, was one of our concerts at the park, because we held about parking cars. About five, six rows apart. July ninth, one of my newer cert members had contacted me, stated she was unable to continue with this program, other life needs, so she resigned from the training. July thirteenth, our new light tower got lettered up. Now July, later that night, we got another heavy rain that caused flooding, mainly in the West Warren areas, Dean and Chapel Street. Any terrain in less than thirty minutes, basically any time this happens, over inch, over an inch of rain, over an inch of rain, those two streets flood, we could get flooding on Main Street. Then, actually between, we had this in the report, between, after, within nineteenth of July, National Grid came out with a power, uh, live line demo trailer. They showed the dangers of electricity and stuff. I invited our cert team to work with to Stirbridge and Charlton, along with our high cert team. We had about twenty people attend that, because that high school came out for a few hours, it's been going with all the technical safeties. And we had our concert, touch a truck event, July twenty-second, artists that could rock something. We did have to move it because it was canceled for rain. Then we had our last concert, July twenty-eighth at the park, which was heading to two, and six members assisted. And then, between that, we had the cooling center, the senior center, which you guys set up. We had cert volunteers manning at the end of the day, so we could keep it open to six P M. We had, the first day, we had two people attend. Second day, we had three, and then the Friday was the most, we had seven people attend. It was the hottest, it was ninety-three's high humidity. So it's good to have that available if, when it's at on, utilizing. And then lastly, our July twenty-ninth, our last big flash flooding event, that was the most rain, an inch and a half in twenty-five minutes. Now that caused flooding in the underpass, Main Street, down by Spencer's and Old West Warren Road and a section of Route sixty-seven, right after the traffic lights in West Warren, and once again Dean and Chapel Streets. This time, took probably about forty-five minutes for some places to go down. Like I said, you get that inch over within the hour, this one was inch and a half. So it was a couple more places flooding. And it was, I think it was a tree on the wires on Main Street too. Of course, we had just under twelve inches of rain for July, I measured. And I think on the southeast side of town, we probably had closer to fifteen, because it was one time that rained a lot more on the south side of town than western.
Well, thank you very much.
Fairly good job.
Yeah, I mean, you guys are staying really busy.
Yes.
And everything you guys do with the concerts and everything, you guys are amazing, thank you very much.
Next, next event we probably helped was the fireworks. But also now, I lost another member recently too. All my events, I reach out to the regional teams, Charlton and Stirbridge and A, we helped them, we helped us. So it's become more of a regional effort in all our activities.
So here's our recruiting pitch now. Anybody that wants to join the cert team?
Yes, and actually, they're going to be running a course that could be, get, get some people done quicker. We, we're going over a course too, month by month, again, as I'm doing it. We can try to go over even if we do everything, try to keep our skills and everything.
It's a great opportunity for people to help out the community and especially in emergency situations, if you wanna help others and be a part of it and doing good for our community. Definitely, cert teams the way to go and help out, you know.
If they're volunteers.
Jim McKeon is probably the best guy you can work for, he's easygoing and, you know, definitely help you out and. Jim McKeon is probably the best guy you can work for, he's easygoing and, you know, definitely help you out, and um, they can contact you, how?
Uh, my best way is probably the, my email, uh, McKeon@warren/ I'm not going for it, if someone wants to contact you or, or just kind of forward the message, which would be, and then you can go from there.
Thank you very much, sir, did you have anything else?
Um, no, pretty good, I think, I think I've.
Yeah, you're pretty busy.
Yes.
Did you have anything?
Well, I'll just say, so on the town website, there's a bunch of buttons on the left, and one of those buttons is cert, so if you want more information, go to the cert button.
Yep.
And there's contact information, there's a description, the history of cert, and some other stuff about the emergency management agencies, so that'd be a nice place to get info.
And you guys are getting new equipment, you know, getting more stuff now, and, you know, it'd be great for people to learn this stuff and help out, you know?
Sheltering is one of the biggest things, we had to do the shelter, the all hands on deck, and that's, that's, the, all the regionals are doing the shelter too, so you kind of have to self-sustain. Having other people in that cooling centers.
Very good, thank you very much, sir.
All right.
All right, um, next thing on the agenda is discussion and acceptance on the full page meeting notices. And this is the.
Yeah, okay, the blue's still there, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, okay. Save some bluing.
We held that on. Yeah?
The only thing you added is this meeting will be conducted in person and remotely, using video conference technology, and then at the bottom, um, we like
Does it link?
The Zoom link meeting information and not putting the actual link, because it's not going to help anybody to.
No.
Touch it, so it's just has the meeting information.
Very good.
So, I don't know, Board of Health, do they have a different Zoom ID or assessors, or?
I will check with them before I.
She might have to customize, yeah.
Yeah, right now, I've got it just with all the different boards, but I'll make sure that they have correct Zoom information, because I know Piney Board has a different one.
Yeah, and then, um, you can take this and turn it into a template, a Word template?
Yep.
And then give it to them that way.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, looks good.
Do you have anything, sir?
Uh, well, it's, it looks good to me, um, I, I, is it going to be select board or board of selectmen? Because I know there's two different terms.
Select board's kind of the more modern thing to say.
Well, select board is, but according to what I was listening to, they say you're not supposed to use selectmen anymore.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
I think you, uh, the board may have to change that, if, if that, you know, if, if that's the way you want to go.
We're in a different era, Mrs. King. We're in the era of everything's offensive.
I'm just saying what I learned on my training. It's where we room.
Well, I don't know, in the grand scheme of things, this is like, whatever. It's, it's pretty much.
All right, um, so I'm good with it, you good with it?
Yep. Do we need a motion, or we can just?
No, just accept it.
Yeah.
I'm good with it.
It's good.
It's just a change.
Yeah, make it so.
All right, so warrants and bills.
All right, I'll make a motion to pay the following warrants. Number seven payroll, fifty-one thousand, three hundred and ninety-six dollars and sixty-one cents, number eight payroll, fifty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-three cents, number eight vendor, thirty-four thousand, twenty-nine dollars and ninety cents.
I'll second that, okay?
I got more.
Nope.
Number, number nine vendor, hundred and sixty-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and eighty-seven cents, number ten vendor, sixty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. Okay.
I'll second all five of those, and all good?
Richi Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
I'll make a motion to pay the following FY twenty-three bill, associated records for seven hundred dollars.
And I'll second that, all in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously.
Make a motion to pay the following FY twenty-four bills, WB Mason, three hundred and eight dollars and ninety cents, MMA, forty-one dollars, Miracle Connell, twenty-six hundred and ninety-five dollars, Modern Pest, a hundred, the phone cleaners, eight twenty-five, Comcast Business, hundred and forty-three dollars and thirty-five cents, Crystal Rock, thirty-one seventy-four, Garaventa USA, fifteen hundred dollars, National Grid, seventy-two thirty-seven, Verizon, eleven ninety-three, C two MA Adams, two, twenty-two hundred and three dollars and ninety-seven cents, Stericycle, hundred and ten dollars and fifty-seven cents, Amden Communications Corp., uh, forty-five hundred dollars, Bain Corp. Inc., twenty-six hundred and ten dollars, and Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, five thousand dollars.
So everybody knows MMA is Mass Municipal Association?
Yes.
Okay, just when we do these, we want to make sure we write that out. I'll second that, all in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously. Okay, minutes for August third, two thousand twenty-three.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from August third, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that, all in favor?
Richi Hacker, aye.
David Dufresne, aye, the motion passes unanimously, Todd Administrator Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, members of the board, the public, um, it's been a busy week, uh, actually, two weeks, uh, since we had met, um, we have had, um, a training last week, um, with the highway department and the sewer department, uh, got together, um, and did a, uh, training, uh, on P P E and the importance of uh, safety data sheets and how to read those, those actually happened, uh, that was done and conducted by, um, highway, uh, the Highway Super Surveyor, Jeremy Olson, um, and Ralph Sabowski, uh, so everybody participated, that was a mandatory training, um, and there was some great questions, um, and it went very well. Um, this week, we had another training at the police department, uh, we had, uh, I had worked with the chief, uh, uh, Millet, uh, to get in MMA, uh, to get Maya in, I'm sorry, uh, Maya, the Massachusetts Interlock, uh, Association of Insurance, um, in to do a training for, um, uh, sexual harassment and, um, you know, diffusing, uh, intense positions within the, uh, workplace, so, uh, they came in, um, they did a training, uh, for the entire, um, uh, department, um, they, uh, it went very well, I think it lasted, uh, about three hours, um, we also had in, uh, this week, Tekton Architects came back this week, um, I know I had reported to the board, uh, that Tekton Architects, uh, was in, uh, the previous, uh, time that we had met, um, they, uh, came in this week, uh, to specifically, uh, meet with, uh, Chief Lavoy, uh, and his team, uh, down at the, uh, uh, firehouse, uh, for, um, you know, programming, uh, initiatives, uh, going on for our feasibility study. Um, they, uh, took up most of the morning from what I, uh, gathered from the chief, and that they were very informative, uh, they were very knowledgeable, they went around the whole, uh, Station A, they went down to Station B, they looked at the equipment, they looked at the apparatus, they, you know, they talked about where they see the department, uh, within the next ten to fifteen years, um, and, 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 on, you know, what potential new growth they see in town, um, so they, they covered a whole gamut of, of, of topics. Uh, all part of their programming as part of their, uh, report that they're going to be doing, uh, for us for our feasibility study, um, so that was good stuff, and I got a good, uh, response back from the chief, uh, saying that he was very pleased with, uh, you know, what had transpired, I don't, I don't know if the chief wanted to add anything to that, or?
Uh, just to kind of branch off of, of what you were saying, it was a good meeting, it did, uh, went from about nine in the morning till almost two in the afternoon, actually, uh, so, uh, it was a busy day, but, uh, we sat down, we talked about all aspects of the fire department, the buildings, the apparatus, the staff, uh, we looked at what needs would be for a potential building for the next fifty years, uh, you know, what exactly, I mean, this was a, you know, made sure that, you know, nothing extravagant, nothing, just the basic needs, how many offices, you know, uh, you know, different things that we see in the department and the, and the call volume, where they're going, and, you know, potentially staffing twenty-four hours, you know, with at least a couple people, which is like what we do now from seven to eleven, but, you know, calls happen overnight too, so, as things continue to change and as our demographics change, uh, with, internally with the department and, and, you know, our call staff changes, you know, you know, we're going to have to face some of those things coming down the road and, and, uh, you know, obviously, both police and fire are in buildings that aren't necessarily ideal for today's world and, and where we are with public safety, so we're, you know, we're taking it seriously, we looked at all those different things, and we tried to do it in a very responsible and fiscally responsible way, you know, not, you know, certainly not asking for, you know, this, that, the other thing, but truly what the needs would be, so, uh, uh, we looked at square footage, uh, we reviewed different plots and, and, uh, you know, potential areas where they, they possibly could go, so they're looking at some of that stuff, so they're going to prepare all that in the background, uh, send over a, a formal report and, 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 you know, get back to us within the next six months with this, and any additional questions, they're going to follow up on that, but both, uh, both members that came out, uh, were very, very professional, uh, you know, very clearly had done this before, um, you know, had, had, uh, a lot of, a lot of knowledge and a lot of different things, and uh, you know, we talked about PD and, and how we would work together and, you know, community areas, uh, within a potential building like that, uh, you know, I mean, we always work very well with them, you know, this is not one of those towns where everything has to be separated and stuff, there's no need for that, it comes with way too much of a cost, so, uh, the more shared areas of, of a building like that is, is better for everybody, I think, so it was, it was a good meeting.
It was very good, were they able to get some insight to you that you didn't think about?
Well, yeah, I mean, you know, certainly, certainly, you know, newer technology and stuff, you know, the incorporation of, we talked about things like having a fuel insight on, uh, for the entire town on a property like that, what would that cost, you know, uh, how, how would that, you know, how much would that be? How, what are the savings of, of, of being able to buy bulk fuel for all, you know, municipal, you know, uh, departments and vehicles to use and stuff, which is what you see on a lot of these modern type buildings, uh, solar on, on, you know, uh, uh, overhead lean-tos for police cruisers and stuff like that, certain, certain types of things, whether or not, you know, requirements for, you know, electric charging things, I mean, we, we just live in such a different world now, you have to think about all those stuff, and, uh, certainly, there's a huge push, especially on fire department, you know, obviously, there's always been a, a, a safety for bloodborne pathogens and, and biohazard, you know, situations, especially EMS related stuff, so that's all come to light, there's always been standards there, but everything nowadays is, is so much more liability and everything, so, you know, they were very, 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 uh, you know, versed on what should be isolated, you know, each, this room should be a decontamination room, this room should be, you know, strictly, uh, you know, a, a, a decon slash, you know, this is where your washing facilities are, you know, the, so, none of the, all the things we currently do with the location that we are, and we try our best, but we just don't have the modern technology and the space to be able to separate that kind of stuff, but, you know, it, you know, bloodborne pathogens are huge, cancer in the fire service is, is probably the biggest ticket item that's out there right now, there's so much cancer awareness with the gear, uh, because they've proven time and time again over the last several years, just how much more of a cancer rate firefighters have than, than, uh, than, you know, civilians, uh, and it's been proven, uh, you know, a million times over, you know, several different serious types of cancer are much more prevalent in the fire service than in any other profession that there is, so, uh, and it's because of all the exposure to the different things over the years, so uh, cancer screening, you know, separation, gear washing, all of that stuff is, is huge right now, and they, they made it a point to make sure that, that, that's going to be included in here, because it's, it's safety for firefighters and honestly, it's, it's the responsibility of the town to, to have those services for them now, the way, the way things are, the standards are these days, so. Um, you know, like I said, nothing mind-blowing, just, you know, just taking what we have now, modernizing it, making sure we have space to grow, uh, nothing extravagant, but trying to move forward in a, in a good direction.
Very good, okay.
It was informative, very informative, I enjoyed it, so, looking forward to another conversation, they said they'd get back with anything, so as soon as we hear back from them, we should be able to go to the next phase.
Thanks, Chief, thank you, um, and, and so, we wrapped up with, with that aspect of the programming, so, uh, the municipal side, public safety side has been done, um, they're going to get back in touch with us, um, once they compile all of this information, they'll get us out into a draft form, and we'll look at the initial programming in the draft form, I'm sure there'll be revisions and corrections going back and forth, uh, between the departments, uh, so that they can, um, make some adjustments moving forward. Um, so, uh, the work has started on that project, we're really excited, uh, about, um, its trajectory. Other things that, uh, I, I was able to get done this, uh, last two weeks was, we had, um, Maya's renewal for, uh, the town's insurance, uh, for, um, the application to get it in, uh, it was due on the fifteenth, we got it in, um, before that, uh, for both, uh, I sat with the chief, uh, Millet, to go over all the stuff that he has for police, um, and I also, uh, went over all the stuff that we have to do for public officials, made sure that those were done, sent in at a timely manner for the applications from the county, so those have been completed. Uh, we, uh, also this week, uh, we've been working on, um, you know, again, closing out year end, uh, so, uh, the office of the accountant, treasurer, collector, uh, are very busy right now, uh, they are, you know, obviously, uh, collectors are collecting as much as you can, uh, for revenue, treasurer is trying to close out, uh, you know, all the cash books, get those up to, uh, the accountant to reconcile, uh, the accountant's looking to try and close out the year end, uh, very soon, and in the process, as year end closes out, then we move to the certification of free cash, um, you know, hopefully, in, in, you know, before the special town meeting, uh, in the fall, so, it's a very busy time for, for those offices right now, um, and um, we're working very hard, um, with, with getting V A D R in, um, so all of those offices, uh, simultaneously, are also working with representatives from V A D R, uh, to institute the new software, the new technology for V A D R, so not only are we simultaneously looking to do a year-end closeout, we're also simultaneously getting new software, so kudos to those departments for, for doing that, is, is a part of the work, and, um, they certainly, um, have, um, you know, participated in all of the trainings and, and, and going back and forth with V A D R, uh, so, so far, I, I've been hearing this is going pretty well, uh, but, you know, again, there's, uh, things that could come up at any time when you're doing a major software change, that we have to be, you know, aware of at any point. We, we did receive, um, uh, several, uh, resignations in different departments, uh, more actively, uh, as I indicated before, we just posted the position for a police officer, uh, that's, that's, uh, in the process of, of getting that. Uh, our Board of Health, um, that's another very important department, um, you know, there's a possibility that there may be, uh, some interest internally, um, we're going to see how that plays out, if not, that will get posted, uh, immediately. Um, and then, obviously, uh, building and planning, uh, very critical, uh, you know, part of the, uh, of the organization, uh, we're going to have to, uh, work with getting that, and I've reached out to both, um, uh, building and planning and Board of Health to kind of put together a list of where they are, uh, in both offices, so to, to try to give us like a roadmap of where things are, what things that are currently you're working on, um, you know, uh, any stuff that has, uh, time-sensitive deadlines that we need to do, uh, if we can get those lists and put those together, um, passwords, uh, you know, voicemail numbers, uh, anything that we need to have, uh, to have access to make sure that those offices are running, um, you know, uh, effectively when, when, when new staff come in is, is critically important, uh, we're trying, um, to, uh, to get, uh, a plan put in place, uh, so it's very seamless as possible, uh, for those departments.
Um, uh, obviously, uh, we've been working, um, with, um, some, uh, R F Ps in, in procurement aspects of the, different things, um, you know, I was hoping to get, uh, uh, all quotes in,
or quotes in from, from contractors, I, uh, for the senior center project, I reposted it out there to expand, I only received a few, um, but it kind of gave me a gauge as to how much the project is going to cost, um, so, we put it out there, we're hoping to get. Um, so we put it out there, we're hoping to get, um, responses by, uh, the end of the month, August thirtieth, um, and then bring them to the board, um, for consideration. Um, there's that, I've been working with the Sewer Department on the sludge hauling contract. Um, the sludge hauling contract, uh, as I had mentioned before, had expired. Uh, we need to get that out to, uh, an RFP. Um, you know, they had looked at, uh, possibly going with tie-in bond. Tie-in bond was going to charge the town four thousand dollars to do it. I said, you know, let, let me look at it and see if we could do it internally, I think we can. We're going to save the town about four thousand dollars, uh, to do it internally. Um, and, um, and the, the, you know, the Sewer Commissioners are very appreciative of that. It's just, it's a little bit, it's going to take some time to do, we'll have it done within the next, uh, few weeks or so and get it out there, um, uh, so that we can get some responses back. Um, and then also, I've been working with CMRPC, Central Mass Regional Planning, uh, Commission, uh, with, um, you know, putting together on this EDA grant, a more detailed scope. Um, I had reached out to our partner, Chris Dumphy. Uh, Chris said that the, the scope is actually a little bit too more detailed for him. Um, he, he had suggested that we contract with an engineer, uh, on some of the, um, the, the details of, of the scope. Uh, and he was able to get, um, CMRPC to give us some, uh, technical assistance money, uh, to retain an engineer, uh, for a couple thousand bucks to help us develop a little bit more further detailed scope in hopes that we would get more, um, you know, somebody to, to respond to the RFP. So again, those are all things that take time, we're working through them, uh, we're getting them out there as fast as we can to turn those around uh, for the town, because then that, we know that they're, I know that they're important projects for the town. Um, I'm happy to report that, um, Sharon Millie, our, uh, Senior Director, who's, I know she's been working very hard down at the Senior Center, and she came, uh, to the board, I think, a few months ago, talking about, um, applying for a grant for, uh, going in with another town. Uh, they went in with a, a, a cooperative, I think with Ware, uh, and maybe a few other communities, um, with, uh, digital literacy, uh, enhancement, uh, for adults, for older adults. Uh, and, uh, they were awarded the grant. So, um.
Very good.
I was able to, to meet with Sharon prior to the submittal to, you know, to, to write up a letter of, of support on behalf of the town to get it out there. Um, but that whole collaborative that they put together, uh, the collaborative, not just, not warrant, but the collaborative and warrant, and where is the lead of the collaborative, uh, they received ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty dollars from the state um, to do, um, some digital literacy outreach, um, for our, our, our seniors in town. Um, and that's from the, uh, Executive Office of Elder Affairs at the state. So, um, that's, uh, something important, I think it's, uh, it's well received and I, you know, I thank Sharon for her hard work and her dedication on, you know, getting this and, and following through. Um, so hopefully we'll get some more technology down at the Senior Center.
Very good, oh, very good, thank you. Did you have anything else, sir?
No, sir.
And good job, Sharon. Been doing an outstanding job down at the Senior Center. And with the updates and everything, our seniors definitely deserve, um, this extra attention to get them a nicer building and, you know, a nicer area to, um, you know, have events in.
They're really excited about the improvements around the building, if we can put that together.
They also have some equipment coming.
Equipment coming too, yes, yep.
So. Yeah. They're going to be getting upgraded equipment too, so. All right, and good job, Mr. Ferrari, you've been doing a great job and thank you very much for your hard work.
It's a good team.
Every, everybody in the town's pulling it together and making it happen, it's amazing, you know. It's a good night, did you have anything?
No.
All right. Okay, moving on, uh, new business, do we have any new business?
Nope.
Got no new business. Any old business?
No.
Any old business, no? Okay. Uh, correspondence. Who's Doreen Thompson?
Uh, she said she may come to a, uh, a meeting, uh, this week, uh, she didn't come.
Give us a letter or anything?
No, no.
Okay. Doreen Thompson, are you here? On Zoom, nobody's on Zoom?
No.
All right. So, next correspondence is Comcast handouts, uh, they're on the website, so everybody knows. And these are handouts, uh, about the broadband access and availability. And they're looking at expanding that, they have some information on there for seniors also. Am I correct on that? Seniors getting, um, reduced rates and stuff, so definitely look at it and let us know if there's anything we can do to help you out on this for understanding. And, um, Comcast is trying to help out the community, yeah. Do we have flyers for this at the Senior Center? For the Comcast thing?
We can send them down, yep.
Yeah. Yeah, let them know that they do get a reduced rate and different things they can get.
Yeah, it's in English and Spanish.
Huh?
It's in English and Spanish.
Very good. All right, comments and concerns. Do you have any comments and concerns?
Nope.
Anybody out there?
Joe Conrad, resident.
How you doing, Mr. Conrad?
Well, you know, I was thinking about the Pledge of Allegiance, as we say it, every meeting, so. It was originally written by a Christian minister. In nineteen fifty-four, by act of Congress, under God, was added to it. Sixty-seven years ago, next month. I attended first grade at West School. My teacher, that first day, the first lesson she taught was the Pledge of Allegiance. Bless her soul. Her name was Catherine Cahill. Just so happens that her father, at one time, owned the house I presently live in. It goes around country.
And as you know, Pledge of Allegiance is a word for us to start all our meetings with and, you know, we make sure that happens. As it is written. Thank you, sir, did you have anything else? Does anybody else have any comments and concerns? Chief?
I just wanted to publicly thank the Highway Department, um, the guys, uh, they came over, uh, a couple of them today caught them downtown, saw them doing some striping and stuff and asked them if they'd be willing to come over to the Fire Department and redo our lines and everything. And, uh, they didn't hesitate for a second, they came right over after they were done downtown and they just striped all of our lines at Station A and that wasn't part of the project, but they were willing, willing to help out, I just wanted to say thank you to all of them because I think they did a great job.
Absolutely do. Highway Department's doing an amazing job throughout our community. And, you know, obviously they can't get to everybody and every single road all the time, but they're doing their best. We, we have very, very limited resources and what resources they have, they've been doing an amazing job with and getting things done and working as a community and having your chief just request it on this, on the fly and having it get done, that's what it's all about, helping each other in the community and making things happen. And that's what makes this community really special. And Jim, if you could let you, the Highway guys know, we definitely appreciate all that they're doing too. And.
I messaged Jerk earlier and thanked him as well, and like I said, the two that were on doing the job, they had no hesitation. I just caught them in downtown and they said, they'll, we'll be over as soon as we're done here, so it's nice.
Very good. All right, anybody else have any comments and concerns?
Nobody on Zoom.
Speaking about lines, did we get anything done with marking the handicap spots behind the building?
Not yet.
Okay, yeah, if we could follow up on that?
Okay.
Because I want to make sure they're clearly marked. Um, to identify that they are handicap spots. Make sure that they're properly posted. Okay. Anybody on Zoom have any comments and concerns? Nobody's on Zoom.
Nobody on Zoom.
All right. So no comments and concerns. The next meeting is Thursday, August twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-three, and that is at six PM. And I hope to see everybody again at that meeting. And your favorite part of the night?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second it, all in favor?
Richai Hacker, aye.
David Dufray, aye. We are adjourned, everybody, thank you.